Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
Open meeting with Gary. You're up first.
You're really gonna put him up first? That's the way to go, right there. Jeff's right behind you. Jeff needs Gary.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. Go ahead. I'll tell you what, what I did, I wanted to come and talk about two things. We're getting tons of rumors from business to business about a couple of different things in the town. One is Jefferson Street. And the other one is the parking lot. Hopefully, you know, the one in back. And I just wanted to get some of my input put in and try to get some answers. So when somebody comes in and starts on me, they say, I've got some answers for them.
We know how you feel.
Yes. Okay, first one, and this is Park Myakin Jefferson Street project.
Yes.
I got the blueprint. And on the alleys, we have bump outs.
Yeah.
A semi cannot make the turn even when there's no bump outs. They cannot turn in that alley. They pull into Mark's parking lot and back into the alley. So my concern is, when they put those bump outs, the trucks are just gonna, as long, you know, hopefully, there's no big barriers, they're just gonna go over. Because I looked at Mark's diagram, there's a bump out on the alley, then there's another bump out going into his parking lot here. And on our side were Asbury's buildings. If I'm reading the blueprint right, from Asbury's to the, almost New York Street, there's one car space front of it. It's these entrances. So we're losing like six car spaces.
Well, I think there's 19, they have 19 total on the street.
You're looking on the other side.
Well, yeah, all the total. Yeah, I think there's two in front of the old Jack's, there's nothing in front of Asbury.
Well, you can get three in front of Jack's, you get two in front of Asbury's, and we used to get four.
Well, yeah, the, yeah. Yeah, there used to be two kind in front of Asbury's, I think.
There's two, there is two in front of, well, there was, it was till last week. But that's my concern, I said, parking is the number one issue in any downtown. Is parking. And in Rockville, how many people park on Jefferson? Because they don't want to back out on 36. It's always full. And now, we're taking all those parking spaces away for a curb? That's just my concern.
Well, on the bump out there, you know, I'm looking at that drawing, I think we got the same one, Gary. The bump out that's on the south side or north side of that alley, it's not a pronounce, it's more curved. I mean, engineers are aware that semis have to get in there. I've watched you guys, there's some of them that can pull up there and they are just perfect.
But they're backing up.
A lot of them.
They're not pulling in straight.
A lot of, well, no, there's some that can pack up just perfect.
It depends upon what side.
Depends on driver.
Well, it depends upon, if you got a 48-foot trailer.
Or a 53 or whatever.
That's right.
Yeah. Some of them pull in Mark's alley, some of them pull in his lot, but they won't be able to do that anymore. And they have a heck of a turn. So it depends a lot on the quality of the driver. And I know, it's a concern, I, they're supposed to be designed to accommodate a vehicle to back in, you just don't understand. Yeah, they're pulling in.
Why would they back into an alley?
Well, most of them do back in.
No, most, most, no.
You're sore, okay.
Most streets, those semis pull in and drive through the alley.
Well, but for you, do they all back in, don't they?
Some do, some do. It's easier, well, because they're so big, they can't make the turn at all. I mean, if you get a short bit, you know, a 30 footer or something, they can angle that. But go that many more feet out and try making that turn. See, that's just my concern. My big problem, and I, I said, I don't want to say a whole lot about, my big problem is, nobody came and asked, when this drawing was done, how this will affect local business. No one. No one mentioned one word. I found out about this the week before it started, which I'm fine making it look good. But nobody went to any business downtown and said, how will this affect you? Nobody even asked about how we can get our trucks in until we questioned it, and then you came. You talked them out of it.
We got that worked out, right?
Yeah, we two-wheel it. That doesn't bother me.
Well, I mean, they can back in, back in through that rock.
They're gonna back into the, through the rock. But that, and that doesn't bother me. That's, you're talking three months and it's done. But my concern, when it is done, what are you gonna have?
Maybe this is stupid, could they go one block further?
You can't make that turn now. I'll tell you what, years ago, they could, but they did some stuff down there and they can't anymore. And they can't come in for market at all. That won't make that turn. You can't come in for market. But that was my big thing, was it a, and like I said, I wanted to bring up about Mark's, oh, sorry, Mark's bump outs.
You know, in his parking lot.
So he ends up with, he's got bump outs in the alley, and then this bump out swings all the way around into his parking lot, then he's got another bump out, so that's a bump You don't like it?
If you didn't have to bump out and you were able to park cars there, would that still be a challenge to get in there with a semi?
No, he can still back in. They park, the cars aren't, cars aren't in the lane, he pulls across into Mark's parking lot and backs in. I mean, they've done that ever since we've had.
Well, once this is done, whether the bump outs are there or not, that goes away anyway. So, I mean, these guys, and I, I'm just asking, but do these guys, are their trailers long enough that they can slide their axles up, or?
No. There's a couple that can, but most of them can't. Most of them can't. But, okay, that, you know, I don't want to tie you up through. But that's, that was my questions on the Jefferson Street project. And then I had the York-Jefferson parking lot, and I talked to you. Parking lot or park? I have 12 people in my store.
Employees.
And then start heading down the lane. Deanna, this fall, has 72. 72 kids. And my concern is, there's only one thing that thing should be, black topped and striped. You know, to sit there and put landscaping, you know, you can do some landscaping, if it takes a parking space, I'm 100% against it. We need parking. Because somebody mentioned about parking in back of, when the town takes RMC, put a parking lot back there, people aren't gonna walk there. It's gonna be hard enough to get them to walk and park from where we're at. I mean, you know that being downtown.
People I can be use.
But I, but I just wanted to let you know how many employees there are. Now, that doesn't take into consideration Nevis.
You have Thompsons.
Well, Thompsons is the one that's got 72 students, plus the teachers.
And teachers.
And then you've got Red Raccoon, not Red Raccoon.
Ruths.
Ruthies. So.
Seven too, in a semester.
She's did that, she's had that many once before. Now, she tries to get some of them to carpool. But I just want you to know what you're dealing with, you know, so we're not looking at, it's nice to have it look nice.
Right.
I'll tell you what people care about. Is there a parking place to pull my car inside and go shopping? That's what they care about. So. But the landscaping, my biggest thing is, for the landscaping is, if you do landscaping, do it so somebody can take care of it. We've done so much landscaping and it just goes away, you know. It's, that's expensive to take care of. I mean, you know, like, I had a customer and I told him we're doing this and that, and they said, this isn't Carmel, this is Rockville, this was a tourist. And I said, yeah, Rockville's unique. I said, we're not doing what they do in Carmel. But I said, no, I said, it's gonna be good once it's done. But those are the two points that I just wanted, but I really wanted to make sure on that parking lot, because, like right now, I told my employees, I said, if there's not much parking, you're gonna be parking on New York, facing the curb, so the customers can park.
Okay.
Okay? I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks a lot. That's Cindy here, I think that's all yours.
She's, where is she?
Back here.
Come on up.
I am here just with two updates and a question.
Oh.
Ready for your question. So we were talking about the water project and the grant, they sent an email just outlining the two funding opportunities that we went through. Unfortunately, the SRF funds have all been exhausted, so there were not any, there was not any additional money for what they call ground two, so we're.
Right, but were we just doing that to get access?
We were trying to do some extra funding if we could.
Well, the state revolving is actually dead, but we were doing that because we had to do that to go through. Okay.
They did the SWIFT grants.
Okay, okay.
Which was through SRF.
Okay, so this is a SWIFT grant you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one that they said they've already exhausted the funds, so we will not be able to get anything there, so.
Will that be available next year? Is that just this fiscal year, or?
Only if they put more funding in it.
So how about Oak Ridge?
So that we will not know until August.
Okay.
Give you a heads up on that. And wanted to check in, Nick, will you be getting with me the MOU for the PER? Here's all the exact names.
I can, yeah.
MOU for PER.
To hash out specifics on what it's gonna look like. I can, yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Okay. Well, I talked to Dick Saturday and he said, yes, if the two of us could get together and detail that out.
Yeah, we can do that.
The big push is just editing the costs as quickly as we can. So that if it is something that's feasible and something you want to pursue, that we would look for funding to assist with that project.
All right, yeah, no, I can get with you this week if you're around.
Yeah, that'd be all right. That is the only two updates I had, unless there's any questions.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're up, Nick.
Main thing I have is the ordinance, two-hour parking on Howard Street from Howard Avenue to Erie Street. I have it set up for same day, same meeting. It would make it a class D infraction to violate the two-hour parking. And your vehicle may be towed if you're in violation of that. I have it set up for same day, same meeting, if that's what the town would like to do. It basically says it shall be unlawful and a violation of this ordinance for any person to allow, cause, permit, or suffer any vehicle registered in his or her name to be parked for more than two continuous hours in the following locations. And then it says Howard Street from Howard Avenue to Erie Street. And it makes it a de-infraction, 25 per violation. So that's for the board's consideration.
Anybody wanna make a motion? Wanna talk about it?
You know, we're talking.
That's the next one, right, or two, all the way down? All the way to the end?
Yeah. Two Erie Street.
Paul in favor? Park made it, Liddy seconded.
So you got two signatures, same day, same meeting, then accept or reject. So it's unanimous for the same day, same meeting? Other updates, I did receive an unsafe building law violation from the building inspector, so I'm there proceeding with that. So that's, that's something here in town, one of the residents here in town's been found unsafe under that statute. That's a different process than what we normally go underneath, the nuisance violation. But, so I'll work with the building inspector on that. He gave them some period of time to come into compliance. So we're not through that period of time yet, but I don't anticipate them being in compliance. It is also one of the properties where they've been cited for the nuisance violation as well, though. Then I did receive a couple new ordinance violations for nuisance properties through town. There's a couple that are still in the process fixing their property, so we have a little bit of time before we have to go to court on those. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Any questions? Well, Randy stepped out, oh, Pat.
Yeah, what's, why that section of Howard? What's on there? Why is that at that part?
That's the detour for the construction project.
Oh, so it's only a temporary?
No, no. It's permanent unless we see reason to do it otherwise. No, have you been down that street in the last?
Sometime, but what's along there? Just houses?
No, we have some vehicles, other items.
Large items are making two-way traffic not possible.
And it's the only way we can address the issue, is what we've been told, due to our parking. Especially parking in the street has become a problem over there, and it's just not enough room for two-way traffic unless you have an ordinance.
And we have buses and things like that that go through that section too, when school's in session, and right now, it's with the construction, it's even heavier traffic flow. But some of the things that are being parked on that street are causing problems with bigger traffic.
There've been a couple accidents there too, since it's started.
Are you happy with that?
No, but that's okay, I don't think it's logical, it doesn't make sense.
I mean, what's your issue with it?
Well, why would you have people not have limited parking because you got bigger vehicles? Well, if the bigger vehicles coming by when they're in their two-hour window, it still isn't doing any good.
It's not meant to be permanent parking for large items, there are large vehicles, so the street parking actually as a whole is not really ideal for those type of parks. It'd be like parking your camper on the street in town, or your boat, or, you know, other large ticket.
Can't you individually talk to those people?
Not without an ordinance in place, we can't.
Don't make an ordinance, you can't park a big vehicle in the street period.
This ordinance allows for that, though. I mean, they're not gonna park those large items there for longer than two, for two hours. It does allow them to park at two hours, then move, and then come back and park at two hours.
Okay, well, I, no, I actually don't think it's logical, but.
Okay, Randy? You ready?
There's the cabinet reports from the last two weeks, and there's copies of the property sheets and the report. Those evidence boxes that I requested last meeting that you approved for 7341, I canceled them, they were wanting $80 in shipping for cardboard boxes, which I didn't feel weighed very much, so it's canceled. I'll try to find another source to tangle this from. The Indiana Law Enforcement Training Board set recording instructions for Officer Gentile for the end of August. Their fees now are $1,000 for the basic course, $30 for the stop manual, and $15 for port writing fee, so I guess they're gonna nickel and dime at agencies. Cameron Shiverchuk, update on using oil. Hasn't had to add oil to it for quite a while, we're gonna continue to keep an eye on it. Hannah's car, the trim came off, the corner post that's been repaired, as approved. Bill's vehicle, dash camera and my dash camera, we're still working on getting those repaired. Had a request for $530 for two new vest carriers for Ian Redmond and Cameron Martin. They have vests that are in date, but their carriers, the outer carriers, their vest is We had four officers participated in National Night Out at the fairgrounds last week. And I was gonna say that the ordinance on the fee collection for public safety funds, if you could make an ordinance that that money just goes into account, all those that were listed on that for public safety purposes, law enforcement only. Currently, we have one fund, I think, in it, that we use for.
Well, it was documented in a previous meeting, the accident reports would still go into law enforcement continuing education, and I think that might be by IC code.
It is.
And then it was documented that all the other fees will go into public safety, so that's how it was listed the last time we spoke about the fees.
I didn't think the accident report for continuing education, just the ticket money. So we had that ordinance for before, but the rest of it just go into that regular fund instead of the training, instead of the training fund. I sent you, I gave you a copy of the updated nuisance property violations and what's been addressed, so there's about four of them added to the bottom of that sheet, and there's one correction that has been made, and I think it was 216 Indiana, which is the vacant property at the corner of Erie in Indiana. He's had somebody there cutting a bunch of the brush down and some elderly gentleman, but I also emailed a copy of that report to you from talking to that individual that owns the property. He's an elderly gentleman, and he had to get a hold of somebody else to take care of it. And then there's the CAD calls for the last two weeks, we're also listed for you to look at. So I am.
Chief, did you let me know if any of those properties need a mow?
Yes, sir.
Need a new fund created?
On your one thing.
You got, Randy?
Extra duty, what's extra duty?
Where's that?
Oh, what's that one pay?
That's like, oh, on the CAD calls?
Yeah.
That's like, if you go on vacation, you ask us to do an extra patrol around your house or business, to keep an eye on things while you're gone, that's what that is.
Okay.
I have a question.
It went that way. There it is.
Why would officers be stopping vehicles and giving tickets, which is okay, but why would they be blaming the town board for that?
I don't think it was the town board, and it's been addressed, it was the police commission. Gave us instructions last time that they wanted tickets written for anything over 10 mile an hour. So that's what they did.
Okay. Well, I mean, I still don't understand.
Yes.
Yeah, not just 10 miles an hour.
Well, I don't, I still don't understand why you'd have to even talk to them. I mean, if they're speeding, then, I mean, you give them a ticket and move on.
And it's been addressed. What the, I think the issue was, it's been taken out of the, when you take officer discretion out of it, where the officer uses a traffic stop to educate the motoring public most of the time. If we feel like a warning and a talking to will do it, fine. In the instance of minor kids, I mean, if I stopped your kid driving and they're 16 years old, who's gonna pay for that ticket? More likely you are. So if I can call the parents and talk to them, and let them know what was going on, so that it's saving them money, then that's an educational part.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
But when you say, when you say you can't do that, then officers, you take that discretion away from them. For instance, and I've heard another guy was blamed for stopping a police commissioner the other night and telling them that they made a couple of traffic problems, and, but he just gave them a warning for it, so now he's complaining about that. Whether we write a ticket or not, is the officer's discretion then. It's not, I mean, if we stop a person and they're messed up, I'm sorry, I'm just running behind, okay, please slow down. We're out here, traffic safety rules and laws, or for safety purposes only. So if we can educate and come to an agreement on things, then we don't always write a ticket, but if somebody just starts spouting off, don't you have better things to do? Okay, we'll not discuss it, we'll write you a ticket, you can argue with the judge.
I understand that 100%, but I mean, I just, just, this was one. Kevin?
I'm here to private citizens who have young police commissioners, and I was privy to that incident too, and I'd just like to go on record as saying, at no time do I recall that anybody said you have no discretion. We said 10 mile an hour. So when I talked with Bill McMichael, and he said, well, you know, if somebody, if I'm touching home for EpiPen, we still gotta give them a ticket, I said, that's horse track. Nobody said that. And I'm gonna tell you.
Somebody did say that.
Who?
Somebody did say that.
Tell me who?
Your newest commission member said, I want tickets written. It's in the written paper too.
Okay, we wanted, we wanted, but nobody knew about discretion. We want tickets written.
And the rest of the commission did, did try to correct that.
Okay, well, all I'm saying is, I don't tell you like I told Bill McMichael, that was a cop-out. That blaming dad because you got trouble with mom. And I think that it has been addressed, there's no doubt about it, but I just want to be on, that we at no time said, no discretion.
That's good. Lady, what did you call, you were there, weren't you?
Well, if you say anything over 10 mile an hour is its ticket, that's taken out discretion.
Right.
I hear you, but you know as well.
Is it not?
I think, well, I think we're playing semantics here, but yes, if we say, hey, 10 mile an hour, hey, we went, we went from zero tickets, Randy, to after we, after we made an issue of it, to like, what, 25 tickets in 48 hours? Well, and that was, that was showing us who's boss, I guarantee you.
No, it's not. We have made lots of traffic stops on that road. Lots of traffic stops.
Okay, I've seen reports, I didn't see a bunch of them, so if you did, I apologize.
Look in the CAD calls at how many traffic stops we've made just in the last two weeks.
Well, you're proving my point there. I think, again, I don't thank anybody in this commission for taking away discretion from anybody.
Give me my copy.
62. 62 stops.
More confused. If they go any over 30 mile per hour, we thought that was more safe than the 20. The 20 can't be changed, we understand that, we've been told that, so that stays. And that's a law, that's a policy, I'm not sure I have been using the correct terminology. But we thought 30, and I had someone complain to me, and I said, how fast were you going? 30, hey. So there's the deal. Now, if someone has an EpiPen, I don't ever remember us saying, we are gone. We need to have discretion that has, that makes sense. And we're all in this together. No one wants to listen to 50,000 people, and I've heard it, I've been at the fair for two nights, and I've heard 50,000 people, and that's okay. If I don't wanna listen to that, then I need to withdraw. But we need to get a handle on this, and I go 20 when I go down that street, because I don't want a ticket. And I was raised to follow the rules until just recently.
And we've told people, if they don't like the speed limit on that street, don't go down that street.
Exactly.
So, that's what that issue is.
And I get my hair done down there, so it's critical that I do good.
But that has been corrected, with that shouldn't be stated.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I was told it was the town board, and I.
No, I bet people get confused about who is who.
Yeah, but in the grand scheme of things, I mean, if they're given a ticket, they really don't need to explain themselves, it's just, I'm giving you a ticket. And I'm not telling you to give them tickets, just so you're clear. I mean, so, but we'll move on from this, if you're. I mean, so, but we'll move on from this if you're.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you may.
Oh, thank you.
Can we stop him?
Pardon me?
Can we stop him?
No.
Well, I did question this person because she didn't like the attitude. She did not mention anything about being blamed on the town board, so I have not heard that from anyone. That doesn't mean it didn't happen, but if I don't hear it, I can't make a judgment. But the fact that his attitude, well, we all have a little attitude now again. Pay the fine. And it isn't the fact that it was a ticket, it was the fact that they wanted a diversion, and it cost them, they said, a thousand dollars to get that.
No, it don't.
Well, that's what I was told.
It doesn't cost a thousand, I know.
It's their choice if they want a diversion.
A pre-trial diversion does cost a little bit more money than going through with it, but it doesn't.
I paid it, it was sixty.
It doesn't cost anything on your insurance or your license, but that's not part of ours either. That's the prosecutor's program, that ain't any of us.
Mentioned too.
But we do have issues with attitudes sometimes, and I address those, and I'd like everybody to treat everybody with respect and kindness, but.
And I told them it had been taken care of, end of story.
And my message to the officers was, if you don't, if you've got a bad attitude right now, then don't take it out on anybody else, just take it easy for a couple hours and cool them. There are cases where we run into people that put us in bad moods. We try to avoid that, but it does, it is contagious at times. But I try to get guys to not fall into that trap.
I don't know that it was a bad attitude, because I actually, the children weren't back laughing, she told me. And so I'm thinking, if it was such a bad attitude, they probably would have been crying.
I always, I always carry coloring books with me, and if I had to give a parent a ticket and the kids are in the back, the kids got coloring books, and I always said, everybody gets something today. Can't hardly be mad at you for making the kids happy, so feel free to call me anytime.
Okay. Hold it. You're up, yes. I got to follow that. It's three.
We need to do one thing.
What's that?
Do you guys want to approve that vest for Cameron?
There's two, one for Indiana, one for Cameron.
What we got, oh, the vest?
And I think that the training probably has already been, but I would include that in this meeting if you don't mind.
I'll move. Go ahead. She'll be all second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of that? Yeah, I do, thank you. Did you get this already? I have two.
I've got one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, committee crossings grant, start date, talked to Bush Crossley, they're thinking somewhere in middle of August on our round one paving projects. Round two application is in progress for Sugar Tree Alley there by the post office. And I'll be coming to you for a letter by answer from Edelweiss right there.
So, so you, you think the estimate or estimate is, and is that, that's the, the post office alley, right?
Post office alley.
And, and Roger, did he, he came up?
Eighty-seven. It was around eighty-seven thousand. I, I talked to him, because he put on that estimate that he didn't really allow at the time. It was more of a current right now estimate. And I'd like to go back and do that and kind of pat the hell out of it actually.
Well, you know, it looks like about maximum, we did like four hundred and forty-six on ground one that's coming up. I think that's a total of four hundred and forty-six thousand, our cost is about a hundred and twelve this year. It looks like the maximum we could go for the second round can be crossing around about a hundred and twenty tops.
Good, yeah.
So.
Yeah, we should come in under that.
Okay.
So that estimate only includes the post office though, right?
Yes, yeah, that's not doing anything with Anderson. It's just that segment from North Market Street to Michigan. That's all we're doing in there. The electric department has had a couple tough repairs going on right now. One of them at, the apartments over on Blacksmill Road had some underground burn up, and also on Walden Street had some burn up there, so they've been, they've been working their butts off trying to get that dug up and replaced. Just pulling, I'd like to hear anything else.
Was that something conduiting or was it just wiring the ground?
Yeah, I don't know about that particular one. Most of the time when we do stuff now, we like, we like to conduit if possible.
Yeah, well, I know we have one a couple of years ago here, Dr. Dwar. I don't think that was a conduit.
Yeah, and I, I won't swear to it, but I don't think this out at Blacksmill or Walden was any conduit either.
By nineteen seventy-nine when they did, I said, probably not.
Yeah. As Josh and I have been going through some things, trying to make sure we square on what's in the ordinance and that kind of thing. We did have a couple things on our utilities equipment rates that we noticed wasn't necessarily reflected in the ordinance, and I've got an updated thing here, we left the vac machine off, and we also left one of the, I don't know.
Don't put that on there.
Small bucket or small bag, though I can't remember now off the top of my head.
I have the backwards, what do you say?
And we didn't have the right numbers on that, so I revised that. This should be the current rate that we have on things. Yeah, that's you guys' copy. And just give that to you for consideration and approval so we can get that put in there.
I'll copy the previous one for you. Versus that one. I'll give you both copies, then you'll know.
You want to wait till you have an ordinance strong enough to approve that, or?
Do you want the best copy for your? I haven't, because you. Thank you.
Electric department is needing approval for one school at one underground primary wire, about twenty-five hundred feet, at four dollars and thirty-three cents per foot. Comes to ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-five, I'll be coming from Brownstown if you approve that.
Uh, where were they, are they going to use a lot of that in this? I guess my point is, I saw where a lot of wire was stolen just the other day. Oh, it was irrigation over Monazuma, they took electrical wire, so I'm thinking, yeah, we need that, we want to keep it. But we don't use, keep it secure. It'll disappear overnight.
Yes, it will. And, yeah, and it's, it's hard to get, Brett said that that's about twenty-two hundred dollars more than what it was about this time last year, which is.
Wow, that's surprising.
Not surprising.
I'll make a motion to a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the clarifier drive, the installation on that is complete. After further investigation, discussion, John Eric suggests that the underlying issue may not be a clog, but a change in elevation of the drain to prevent a further outflow of the water. So Bruce followed up that idea and personally refilled the clarifier tank and reopened the valve. Well, guess what? It had drained down to the level that it previously quit. So we believe that the whole issue there is simply a change in elevation, and the air pressure doesn't allow the water to drain all the way out. So appreciate Bruce and John's forethought into that. Bruce could tell you a little bit of a backstory on that too. He heard a, a little bit of a backstory on why it does that, and it was kind of interesting. Mm-hmm. Did you hear that story?
He told us the other night.
Okay, all right. I still, we don't need to excavate, but we still, I haven't seen the invoices from Eco Infrastructure on the jet and back trucks on that. Item number seven is wastewater treatment plant raw pump number two repair from Sycamore Engineering is estimated to have one, or seventeen thousand one fifteen. This is the, like I said, the second one. We had the first one go down, we were able to get it replaced. This one is just a prepared on it. Needing approval for seventeen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We also have an estimate from WW Williams to service out our generators at the wastewater treatment plant, we come out to about twelve hundred dollars a piece. Grand total for two of them is two thousand five hundred and ten dollars. You like it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. These girls are good.
Thank you. Cindy's already spoken about the water improvement project. Our forty-one north sewer expansion that continues to move forward. The actual pre-bid meeting is tomorrow at eleven o'clock here in Brandy's office, and we look forward to that. South Market Street, we have updates from Kelly Dean and Ken Olson Keller's team in late in the day, and we're about fifty percent, maybe a little bit over in terms of actual commitments and paperwork being done. I would anticipate probably in the next week or so that that will creep upwards to about eight or ninety percent.
So.
So they've done some really good solid work on getting some of these issues taken care of.
So we have some issues to deal with on that.
Yes.
Since we're on that topic, you guys want?
Yeah, I've got.
Condemnation.
I've got several things there under South Market Street, if you notice.
There you are, okay.
So with the right of way issues kind of somewhat coming underhand, we still have a few properties that are hanging in the balance. Mr. and Mrs. Knappi also responded back to us. Ken had done a proposal for two additional off-street parking spots on their lot to the south of their house. And Knappis want to know if it would be possible to increase the size of that from two to six. And.
And Ken said it was doable, right?
Ken said it was doable, it'd be over the, the storm, drain a little bit. Also, the difference, I think, was, stand by here in terms of money. For a two-car width, it's seven to nine thousand dollars in construction cost, for a six-car width, it's about seventeen to twenty thousand in construction cost. So figure double.
So it goes over that twenty-four inch pipe, I mean, I mean, so it goes over it, I mean, what, 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 is it a drain, or I mean, what we call?
No, it's a storm drain, it runs down through there. It's one we had blow up here a year ago. Yeah, I suppose if it blows up again, it shouldn't for a very, 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 very long time.
Well, that one's probably tied, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was holding. Is it tin? Tin whistle? Was it tin whistle or was it clay tile that was in there before, do you remember?
Was clay tile.
Yeah, I doubt it. Well, so that's something we need to consider what to do here. Anybody else look at that email? Ken sent out a drawing. And, well, we get some emails, it's hard to track them. Anyway, anybody want to look at? So we have one, what's it mean, one parcel clear, and we have twelve parcels secured? What's the difference between clear and secure on there?
Probably the acceptance of the Jefferson era.
Three parcels secured and submitted. So we have twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and we have seven verbal acceptance. Pending sign docs.
Can I see that?
Oh, which one?
I know I got it, but I just.
Today.
Okay, those are all the ones that.
We just paid.
That one, they have not sent to me yet.
Oh, okay.
Three parcels secure, I think that would be addition two.
Uh-huh.
So.
Okay, so we're just waiting on eighteen.
Probably in those there.
No.
Yeah, that's verbal.
Do I got any comments or concerns on this?
I was hoping for that. She did.
Do we have to?
Yeah, you got, that's official action, just took a step to do that, but.
Right, it'd be under contingency, I, you know, the cost is twenty-eighty split, so it. As Kim would say, I think it looks doable.
I've, I've seen it, but.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I, moving the project forward, I, you know, my opinion is to do it, but.
Well, I'll move.
Not crazy about it, but we can do this.
Got a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Uh, what you got now, Jeff?
All right, another late-breaking thing before I move into condemnation is that he spoke with a property owner the other day about utility pole relocation and addressed their concerns about where that utility pole would eventually be moved to on their property. And the lady seemed more than happy with what we proposed.
This is part of the utility relocation to South Market?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
And she was, she was not wanting to sign off on any deals until she knew where that pole was going to be, so he went down there and talked to her. I typed up a letter explaining where we would move it and sent that to Structure Point toward the end of the day today. So hopefully that may move that particular property a step closer than online. So I appreciate.
Good. Uh, where's your condemnation thing?
All right, three, Structure Point recommends prepping for condemnation procedures if needed. And I.
Yeah.
It, it's hard to tell if, if we're actually going to need that or not.
It's a worst-case scenario if we, if we keep the project in the time, my understanding from the email, I pulled this out from a month ago. But yeah, if we, if we're down to the wire and we have to keep the project moving, this is the last, last alternative we have. But it doesn't look like we're going to be in that situation, but still, they want this approved to have it in place in case we do.
Right.
Because basically it's condemnation of vacant property.
Right. And, and their recommendation was, was to maybe talk to Nick and get a deal from him on maybe doing a little bit of the prep work should have been needed, and also possibly reaching out to one of the recommended law firm, law firms to see about an MOU and trying to get a partial idea of an agreement, should we want to pursue them and have them do that work. Does that make sense?
There was three listed, I think.
Yeah, they're all Indianapolis. I'd recommend you use Terre Haute, because they'd be about half the cost.
Well, I, it doesn't look like we would need it, but we better be prepared in case we do.
It's not really something I typically handle, condemnations, not, so, but I'm certain there's attorneys in Terre Haute that would do it cheaper.
So what, what do we need tonight?
Northeast Indian attorneys.
I, I think what we need tonight, just kind of give a tentative approval to have Nick reach out to try to get.
In touch with?
In touch with, with a firm that would represent us should we.
I can put feelers into Terre Haute if you want me to.
Someone.
I'll second.
A second. I mean, that'd be my recommendation is to use Terre Haute, but.
Aye.
Again, hopefully we, we don't need to do that, but like you said, we don't want to be laying, paying out the car.
Well, you hate to set the thing back another year just because we have one parcel.
Okay, that's South Market. Any other questions on South Market Street?
I don't think so.
Jefferson Street project construction is underway.
Can I talk here again, Jeff?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Susan is here. I spoke with Susan this afternoon, and, you know, although I think David's looked at it, I went and looked at it, the, the entryway into Susan's building, there's two sets of steps, and I, I typed up what we talked about, Susan's like, this time, but yeah, there's two sets.
The northeast set.
I'm sorry.
The northeast step.
Well, you.
On the east side of the.
Yeah, there's, there's that, I mean, both, both of them are kind of in the.
I didn't realize that.
In, in the, in the sidewalk, you know, the, the project.
Which probably further than in the one on the north side, I think.
It's further out than the one to the south, yeah. But both of them are going to be a problem to do the project. But uh both of them are going to be a problem uh to, to do the project straight sidewalk through there. Uh you know, also, uh Mr. Kevin Beck, the project manager, was over there. I talked to him after Susan and I spoke, but the, the quick solution is uh what we got here? She, Susan says she'd be willing to allow us to take those steps out. However, one, we have to provide some sort of access to get in. And say wooden steps. They said had some wooden steps built to put up there so they can get in and out. I talked to Kevin about Mr. Beck, the foreman, about moving those and putting them back. And I mean, they're not going to have to be moved every day. They'll, they'll be working elsewhere and they'll come down there and then I put them, you know, move. He said, hey, we got no problem uh with that. So uh you're kind of carpenter. Then the other issue is when, once, once we're done, we need to put something back permanent unless we were to acquire the building, which we've never really gone further on that. But uh if we acquire the building, we wouldn't want steps. But.
I haven't done anything on that. I just hope to push.
Yeah, we, we put that on hold. But, but, but the, the, the issue is if we, we, once the project's done, we have to go back with something permanent. We have to be to code. So I'm here.
Make it ADA accessible.
I don't know if we're going to put ADA. I don't know what you do. I mean, right now we have steps. You can't have a ramp. You're not looking for a ramp, are you?
I don't exactly know how any of that will work, you know. If, if, if I were God, I'd think, you know, I just really don't want to yank out any of this because it's going to cost.
Right. Well, we're looking for the best final product that we can.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good. I just thought, there's no reason to put in stuff that isn't code. If, you know, if I were going to rent, rent the building to somebody or sell the building to somebody, I'd probably have to bring it up to code. Y'all are going to put in new concrete. It may as well be.
Well, again, I don't know that we'd have to put a ramp in. I mean, Nick.
She'd actually probably be grandfathered in and not have to bring it up to code.
I would think so. That's.
Well, but is, Nick, is that true if they're making changes?
If you were making changes, then it'd be different.
Okay.
You'd be grandfathered in as long as you're not changing the overall structure of the building. You'd be grandfathered in now.
Yeah, but, but it, but y'all are making changes.
Right, so.
Do you have to bring it up to code?
No.
Okay.
But I.
Because we're not making changes to the overall structure of the building either. The, the stairs would not be a change to the overall structure of the building. If you were renovating the building, extending the building out or doing the overall structures.
Okay.
Okay, but the stairs are something different.
Okay, so it would pass if it were put back the same way it is?
Right.
Okay.
And that's kind of, I, I, I told her we would, I'd bring it to the board and, and I'm glad you showed up tonight so you could have your input directly. But uh I.
If you were renovating and making the structure into a whole different entity and say you were putting in apartments and a bunch of other things, that would be where that's that. You wouldn't be grandfathered in.
Okay, okay.
But like over here, when they did the lofted areas above the resident, above the businesses on the west side of the square, they weren't required, they were grandfathered in under the statute.
Okay.
So I, I guess for the board to consider, one, if we take them out to do the sidewalk, we have to put up some temporary wooden steps, so that people can. Two, to put back, we have to put back at least what, equivalent what's there or better. I mean, that, that's, that's what I.
Might not be much of a difference cost-wise from a ramp to stairs anyway, though, but.
And that, that's what we discussed and, and I think that's.
I'm going to say, I, I really, I don't know the answer and I don't want to be difficult to get along with. I just thought maybe that on, even though some places, if, if you wind up having to redo it to code next, that, that would be a shame, but.
Might be a good idea to have it quoted both ways and just see what it is.
Well, we'll do whatever we're, we're required to do and, and it makes you happy. We want, we want to get our project in there and uh I think we need to have the sidewalk. Be a straight sidewalk instead of going like that. I mean, it's only logical, right? Well, what do you guys think? I'll shut up.
I agree.
I agree with you.
Well, okay. Do we want to, how should we proceed here?
What are you seeking authority to do?
Well, we just want to take out our steps and we want to show her that we're not going to, we're going to put back what we need to do within the, you know.
Right, at the very least, you replace what was there.
Well, at the least, you know.
Would you like a motion on that?
I, I think.
I'm sorry?
I made a motion that we remove the steps from the Asbury Building but replace them with something equally useful.
And in turn, we have to build some wooden steps. Now, that, that'll have to be done in a timely fashion because I imagine they'll be back up there taking out. They'll want to take those out sometime in the next two, three weeks.
So we get something convenient in the back, it'd be better than the next.
But she probably ought to do what Beaufort does, to have it quoted both ways because then she might be able to just offset the cost of whatever the difference is and have a ramp done. I mean, that's just a suggestion of hers, though.
Well. One thing at a time.
Right, and, and it's just something she might consider.
So you made a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, thanks for showing up. Okay, Jeff, I'll shut up and let you get to.
It's all right.
Get to your work.
Roger's completed the uh final design for the Jackson Board. He's beat a project. Uh the stone, store board's been notified on that. You know, I've got the plans over there in my office. Kevin's uh popped over, checked them out from the library.
Has Steve got those yet? Remind us.
No, I don't think he's picked up any from my office.
Okay.
But Kevin has and I've got them over there parked if you want to pick them up and take a look at them. When uh our next store meeting is eight, two, I think Roger is out of the country uh that day. I'll have to double check. But um once everybody has a chance to, to review those plans, I'll have Roger come in and he can sit down and answer questions, go through it with you guys if you'd like.
Okay.
All righty.
What's the time for you?
Well, once we get the plans, we got to figure out the estimate, see the estimate of cost, and we got to figure out funding. And we're looking at, we're Cindy, we were looking at, on the Jackson deal, help me, are we looking for? Were we going Community Crossing Oak Run? I can't remember which way we're looking.
For which?
Jackson Boogies.
Um I think Jeff was working on a plan on.
The Community Crossing, Jeff?
Yeah, part of it was we were going to do that with East Crossings, but I think Park had a plan where we could uh
Let me see.
Do it something else. I remember on that. Oh, I'm going.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
It was.
Well, we were, we were, we were looking at some Oak Run, what had last in my notes.
Yeah, I just didn't know there was a final thing, so I.
Well, can, can, can we use both? Can we go after both? There's Community Crossing. You can do Stormwater Community Crossing.
It's just a, it's a million-dollar cap for project size.
Community Crossing.
But, but you have to meet the crosses.
Well, can.
But that, but that's eighty.
Twenty.
And then if you're able to get some other dollars and.
Yeah, I, I, let me answer your question. I don't know. Optimistic twenty, twenty-three. I don't know. Being toward the end, I mean, you gotta get the final cost.
But it's an ongoing process and we're just picking at it a little bit at times.
Yeah, I'm going to say, if that's related to Oak Run, then you're not looking at another round until probably April of next year.
Okay.
Uh Water Extension East, I don't have any info on that. Charging's information, no change. I still need to get with Brandy and you guys to go over how we want to do the rates and that kind of business. There's email. I know Brandy, you were going there for a while. We probably haven't had a chance to look at that yet, but we want to figure out how we want to set all that stuff up. UMAC is supposed to be getting with me sometime this week to look at boring over at the depot for the electrical, the charging station.
Are we doing any boring over at the lot?
Yes.
We're not going to do boring over at the lot. Just going to lay conduit, dig it.
Okay.
And put conduit down.
We don't have that far to go.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But at the depot, there's so much, there's a sidewalk that we have to tear up and all that kind of stuff.
Now. Brandy, Randy, oh. Once, once, once we get those deep, those, those charging stations in, people pay a credit card, right?
Yeah.
And I assume that would come to us via
Charge point.
A, a, a transfer, electronic fund transfer. But I'm thinking we probably want to keep that separate line of revenue for electric. I don't know. Yeah, another line. Just, just thinking.
Call it a UV line.
A UV, a what? EV line. We could call it EV.
Hotels advertise that too.
EV charger.
Right, Junior said that they're also going to get uh get cracking on the water main repair and the hybrid replacements now that they're all back from vacation.
Hey, we have a new hybrid in today over on.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
It's not Roger, Roger?
Yeah. We also have to take out there, we encountered several service lines down through there. Of course, it went to the old houses
Mm-hmm.
that's over there, so we pulled all that stuff out of there. We haven't run into any lead uh service lines yet, which is a good thing, but anything like that that we do, I hope the contractors make sure that they let us know so we can document that we found it and we removed it and replaced it with the new set, so. Blur replacement, still waiting on that. Beachwood Park Pavilion painting is completed. That is done. Appreciate Mr. Casey's work on that. The light replacement for the decorative lights, Beachwood Park, we did get the materials in last week. I get the electric department unbusy and I'll have those get, come in and get that installed. As far as the fast-paced urgent care project is concerned, uh I know that Dr. Walz sent in a letter regarding the tension on the sidewalks. Both were included in the redesign that they sent back to us. Uh we're waiting on the store board to take their next steps, I guess, and that meeting is August second. Josh notes the state has signed off on the construction.
Yeah, we got that.
CDR, so. I think the only other thing I have that was on my notes is I got an email. Remind me if I sent this out to you. I know you guys get a ton of emails. There was a gentleman from Aaron Property Management that does the town homes on main management. And he was wanting to know about the possibility of decreasing the meter sizes or the meter rates. Uh he had an email that he was, they forwarded to you guys. I can't remember. Do you remember getting that?
No, no. So this guy wants to increase the meter size on the townhomes?
Yeah, evidently the, the costs associated with it, he feels, is more than what they compare.
Did they buy the meters?
Yeah, well, we put in what they wanted us to put in.
We put in what they wanted to put in and now they want to put in something different.
Because it's costing them too much, much.
Well, as, as our electric folks looked at to make sure, okay.
Water.
Oh, this is water. I'm sorry. Water. Uh but again, why is our, our water people look at this and figured that, you know, this is going to be some.
What did we put in there, Jeff?
I think we put in three-inch meters. So yeah, they're, they're insulting, I'm sure, but.
If it's what they asked for, then we'll change it.
Well, but they want to pay for the change?
I think they don't want to pay for this.
Well, that's what they requested.
Let me forward that email. I thought that I did, but.
An engineer would have designed that for them.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so I'm questioning, will the flow be, okay, would the flow be sufficient? If they go this long?
Again, it's all about their revenue and.
Well, I get that.
Trying to make their profit margins or whatever, but uh when they ask me.
May I add a, a comment to what Jeff's saying about the new, what it is, is when they looked at the utility crop, the utility costs of other communities that they have units in, by far Rockville is much more expensive than the other communities. And I think without doing their due diligence, they had an expectation that it would be about the same cost as what they're seeing in other communities.
So the community's three-inch meters, let's clarify for the public, a three-inch meter is a lot different from what a typical homeowner has, has a what-size meter for a homeowner.
Yeah.
Yes, this was.
A one?
Yeah.
An apples-to-apples comparison on rates.
Yeah.
Not every community's rates are set.
Because typically, our rates for residential are very comparable. I mean, we're in the middle of the pack.
If you look at it from a commercial standpoint.
From commercial.
Homes, it's much different.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's not initially about revenue. It's the intent for them to cover the cost of the utilities, except for electric, in the townhomes. So when they went to look at this and say, oh, this is much more expensive for them and they're still trying to cover that cost and still meet the expectations that they have that their investor to be able to make money, that's, that's where they're, that's why they're asking to potentially make changes. I'm not saying that we should pay or they should pay or whatever, but I just want to put a little bit more backstory behind. It wasn't all of a sudden.
Like she said, they did it without due diligence.
Well, yeah, they, they did.
They didn't look at those rates ahead of time.
But what is their alternative?
Water, yeah.
Have the, have the rates repay their own water.
I mean, that was why they did a three-inch instead of doing a meter to each individual apartment. You're talking an eighty-five dollar minimum charge for water and sewer, so I didn't understand what, what their alternative.
So when you go all-inclusive.
It's passing on that fee to the renter instead of trying to prioritize the landlord.
Okay.
But when you go all-inclusive, it's a disincentive for the renter to be conservative with their usage on. So it's really kind of their problem more than it's a town problem. It's their business structure.
Well, I guess.
I'm not saying it's a town problem, period. I'm, I just wanted to give a little bit more backstory on the conversation around the rates and in comparison to other communities is what's brought up a lot of that conversation.
Sure, but if you're doing unlimited utilities, they're not going to be conservative.
I mean, if they see that that is wasteful, then they'll have to look at the budget of charging.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Sorry, I just want to, just, just because I've been in multiple conversations regarding this and, you know, share with them that they can't assume what needs to be fixed. Everybody's rate structure has to be a little bit different depending on how they debt it to service, what, you know, different they have to pay for.
Tax base, revenue base, population base.
I'll make a note, make sure. I, I thought I sent that to you, but like I said, I send out a lot of emails, so.
Well, that's what they want to do and they're going to buy the meter. Do they, no. Who bought the meters first time they bought? Okay, I mean.
So what, they want to downsize to two-inch?
Yeah, I, I'd have to look again at that email.
Okay, well, let, let's, we'll table it soon.
I just want to bring it up because it's something popped into my head as I was sitting there, so.
Well, I mean, yeah. Their usage isn't going to change, so.
Good point. But the meter base has a charge though, right? It's a fixed fee for a meter base.
It's just like a, a residential customer, or I think we bumped it up to three thousand gallons a month. And so, I mean, as long as you stay at three thousand or under, that's, your water bill's going to be what it is. So, I mean, their usage is not going to change unless they change the structure of who's using it, so.
Interesting point.
I mean, if they're going over their minimum, they're going to continue to go over their minimum, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, they haven't been using water down there yet, really. I mean, they're not even full. They're not close to full.
Oh, do you know how many units are permitted?
Hi, John. I think a lot of discussion came from, at the point that any water was used until the apartment's turned over as rentable was on the contractor. So when the contractor started, right, Brandy, the contractor got the bill, Maxwell, then that's where they were like, oh, jeez.
Yeah.
Look at this.
I bet they were.
This can't be right.
Anything else, folks? That's all I've got.
Okay.
Title four.
Yep. Just a reminder that we are a Title Four and ADA compliant uh organization and we promote the use, anybody who is needing access to, or meeting minutes or accessibility issues can contact me at seven six five five nine two four nine nine nine. Thank you for my minute.
I mean, I don't know if that's something we can overstep or not.
Okay.
I told the fast-paced urgent care representative that I would call her tomorrow because she knew the information was being presented to whether you wanted to accept these plans. The only thing.
Well, yeah, I was pointing the same thing.
Called another meeting and.
There's two of us here.
The state, the state signed off on it.
State signed off.
You guys are both on that board yet.
But it's not an advertised meeting.
Well, no.
Well, I mean, I'm just asking a question.
Stay tuned, August second.
Stay tuned, August second. So I guess that's your answer.
Okay.
Whatever's legal, you tell me.
Were, were they helping to start right away?
I haven't heard enough. All I've heard was.
I haven't heard enough. All I've heard was, you know, I saw the detention pond, Steve, they asked for sidewalk, they said okay to both, so. Beyond that, I don't know.
And are they, is this corporate sound, Tennessee?
Tennessee, Nashville, Nashville.
The state signed off on it effective August versus July. They keep getting put back. That does seem, that's the only one.
I would, I would assume that.
I don't know what the turnaround will be.
I mean, they could, stormwater could advertise for a new, a more, a quicker meeting, but you're sitting in July. You have to have forty-eight hours' notice, so I mean, that's a stormwater board decision, though.
But is it right to say that the only, you guys want to meet so you can discuss whether to have an engineer look at the engineering's report? Is that true?
I think part of the problem was, is that I was the contact person for, I think the name, Will or something like that.
Yes, Will Robinson.
Who said it was okay for them to put the detention pond. At that meeting that Jeff was at, and I think Keith was at also, and you were at that meeting. Uh, we had discussed also, Keith had discussed, that the basins need to be a little bit deeper and have rock in the bottom, and I mentioned to Will that this was also brought in by the town of Rockville. You'll have to touch base with them on what they think that structure, that infrastructure should be. And I've never heard anything back about that. So all we're gonna meet about is what we talked about and their plans.
Mainly the detention pond is the issue.
Detention.
Detention, yes, detention, the D.
Which we're gonna get.
Yes.
And sidewalks along Gertford.
Yeah, I think Keith's point to that was if you weren't gonna do a detention pond, that's where you needed to go deeper with those attachments.
Okay.
Otherwise, they met all the state, according to Josh, they met all the state requirements and such.
And the state has signed off on it, so. Well, darn it.
There's that.
Okay, where are we at?
Plans there for six ninety-two, nine eighty-seven, ninety-five. I make a motion after park.
Thanks. Uh, so we got the bill in here for a clarifier drive, you know, did you, I, from fifty-six, nine fifty-five. I mean, they sent out an estimate at some time, I believe. I couldn't find it, Jeff, but you know.
I sent you an email on that with the attachment. It had the detailed scope of work on that for.
I didn't print it out, but anyway, yeah, there was detail, because their invoice is just for one line, you know, six thousand. But we, I don't know, may rest remember the detail from that, but we we had the estimate for the cost. But that's in here. Uh, we have all those twelve parcels we approved, that's why it's kind of higher than normal. Uh, I don't think there's much else in here. Uh, Ray, hey, Randy, you still ready to talk about? Hey, Randy? Yeah, I was looking at the fuel costs, you guys. I think it's just for June. Does this serious solution bill you guys just once a month?
I don't.
It's while it's split, is it, was that just a portion from public safety? Because it is just once a month, so.
Yeah, it's, it's between fire and police?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it was three thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. I didn't know if you, I, it has highs, wow. But uh, so yeah, that that's just making an observation, good or bad, it's just expensive.
I submitted products that appeared to look like they had.
They've cut back from the.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah.
Of course, the act prices did.
Of course, that's for June, it was higher in June than it is now. Uh, other than that, nothing notable, I, I, you moved a second. Oh, good for you.
All favor.
Um, I have a, I have actually four resolutions that I'll get numbered and dispersed, but that is for transferring the funds out of what was left in the Howard Project local share. There is an even amount of fifty thousand eight forty ninety-one that will be dispersed to the water operating fund, the wastewater operating, light fund, as well as the storm operating. And I believe that when that was put in, that's where all those funds came from, so we're just putting them back to that appropriate place, splitting that.
Then we're gonna move it to the South Market project?
Well, we need to. We're not in bad shape there. First, get it back into operation.
I make a motion to approve.
The other twenty thousand.
All favor.
All right. Sorry, I can't write that down. Um, the other one is, Nick had already prepared the utility repeal of the one-point-four percent on utility tax receipts, although MPa did not have the Exhibit A for me to get to the newspaper, so I would like to just amend the original ordinance ordinance so we're in compliance with advertising that within the thirty days. And then I do have the Exhibit A attachment of the rates from MPa where that repeal of one-point-four percent. So if we could just do an amendment to that and include these rates, please.
Tom, a second.
All favor.
All right.
Um, and then the other thing, I don't know if you guys, I didn't send those till late, but I do have those sets of minutes. If there's any questions or changes that you want me to make on any of those, they're pretty.
I read them.
Simple.
Motion, I can't sign the first one, I wasn't there.
Second. Yeah, I didn't tag those either, but.
I can't sign the first one, I'd sign the next three.
Oh, you guys.
Anyway, yeah.
I put it on there here. You'll have to look at the top.
Yeah.
See if you're absolutely or not.
I think so.
Yes.
Okay, this is a fourteen, I was there.
Um, that's all I have.
Okay, fourth.
Oh, this is legal. Wash me out, and you want me to just, I sign.
Oh, just, yeah, put a line through there and I'll wipe it out. Yeah, thank you.
We'll wait till we get this cleaned up, but, does Bruce have anything for us? Okay.
Okay, this is where we weren't at. So I'll just go ahead and put that record in the speed, because we weren't there.
When was I at the, by eighteen?
That was the seventh March, so.
Oh, okay.
Where are we at here?
I don't know. If I sign something, I wasn't supposed to just ask me.
Oh, I got it. I usually mean to put a note on there, who not signing, but.
I said, I don't think I missed any of them. Unfortunately.
No, I, I'm not putting that on you, but I wonder if that would be a topic of, if you would like to share. I mean, I don't have the email printed, but I can.
I say I haven't, I just brought it up.
Okay, if you don't mind, thank you.
Yeah, so while you're actually signing, just to share, we did get notice this morning from Mindy that that the town of Rockville was awarded a twenty-thousand-dollar bike destination master plan grant. So, that came from the Department of Health. The uh, working committee will be getting together shortly, hopefully next week, um, to start looking at consultants to refer that.
Do you do it too?
I don't think she has minutes for the one I was.
Okay, thanks.
But it's kind of something that.
So, yeah, yeah.
School of Arts.
They did, uh. I like how you put on there to advertise. So that, I'm actually looking at MPa for you just to review, but you put on there to advertise that the thirty days have seen.
I appreciate your directions.
No, I appreciate them.
How do you start putting, when you put the date later now?
I know, I like. Well, it's just a reminder, though, to me to make sure some of them don't be published.
Maybe, maybe not, it was for the extension. Between the wellness coordinator.
Okay.
I just parked.
What were we gonna utilize it at?
So it's to do a master plan.
Oh, got you, yes.
Can I make a motion on you?
Is there a second?
Okay, thank you.
Motion to expedite the chair for.
Okay, where are we at? Okay, well.
I was already talking about the fast, the fast-paced urgent care.
The condemnation.
Yeah.
Did you make, did you make anything?
Do I?
Did you make anything?
No, Bruce said he didn't have anything.
Public comment?
Public comment?
Hey, public comment? I'm sorry, I didn't get caught up. Thank you.
It's just good to know after a year and a half, we're finally getting something done with parking. Question now, when veterans come in and they say, hey, we need you guys to sign off on this before we get to engineering and the survey and all that, it's nice to have that commitment so we can go ahead and and make, make the deadline, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it.
And all the girls can come home at once now.
You sure you want them to?
Yeah, we can do. They bring the grandkids.
Oh, there you go.
They can drop them off.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to the chairman.
Second.
All favor. Thank you very much for coming.